Which way are we gonna go? This way, that way?
What's that? Roll call?
Yeah.
Now that we're going off to each other, we'll start with Susie and then you go. Good? Okay, I'm gonna start the regular special called Council Meeting of the City of Elgin, Texas together to order on Tuesday, September 8th, 2020 at 7:01 PM. We're gonna start with roll call. Susie, we're gonna go ahead and start with you.
I'm here.
Jones is here.
Cannon here.
Vega here.
All right, Madam Secretary, I certify that we have a quorum. Please let the record reflect that Councilmember Lopez and Councilmember Dennis are both absent upon notice. Do I hear a motion to excuse Councilmembers Dennis and Lopez?
I'm with Pinson.
Got a motion by Councilmember Pinson. And second by Councilmember Brazier. And I'll call for vote. Mayor?
Pinson, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Gonzalez, yes.
Vega, yes.
Susie, you'll be after Jessica.
No, okay.
Jones, yes.
All right, that passes unanimous. Please let the record reflect, both the members are excused. And then that'll take us to the invocation. Mayor?
Our Father who art in heaven, Lord, we come to you with bowed heads and humble hearts. Lord, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. Thank you, Lord, for blessing us to see another day. Pray your blessings upon this meeting to be what you'd have it to be. Bless each and every one of us that are represented here tonight. Bless us to do what's best for the city and its citizens. These are the blessings we ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
And we'll forego the pledge for the audio purposes. And then that'll bring us to the public hearing. So I'll recess the regular meeting at 7:05 and enter into the public hearing at the same time. Item number one under the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 20 through 2021 annual budget and ad valorem property tax rate for the City of Elgin, Texas. Has anybody signed up for the public hearing?
Mayor, I actually got a little presentation I thought we'd make now that'll cover everything, the other agenda items. So I thought we'd run through it real quick.
That'll work.
Right here so we can... We've made a couple of changes in the slight changes. So I thought we'd get that on record as part of the hearing. I guess I just want to note that we... This is the second public hearing that we've had on the budget and the tax rate, although we're only required to have one hearing. As we discussed last time, the council, we wanted to have a second hearing to make sure we have, there were plenty of opportunities for the public to weigh in on the budget or the tax rate. The budget, as amended, and we'll talk about that real quickly here a little bit, is just over 18 million proposed expenditures for all funds and all operations. The general fund breaks down like this. As we all know, primarily the general fund is where the basic services from the city come from. And it's the fund that's primarily supported by property tax and sales tax, as the graph shows here. Over 50% of the general fund is funded through local tax dollars, and that's where we get our basic services. It's about nine and a half million general fund revenues we anticipate next year. As we talked about previously, this was the slide from the original presentation, we've made a change in the proposed tax rate and have actually reduced the tax rate from what we had originally anticipated, maintaining the same tax rate as we have for a number of years. But we made the choice to reduce the tax rate slightly, and we'll get into that a little bit more. I always think it's good to remind folks that the City of Elgin receives less property tax dollars from Elgin taxpayers than obviously the schools, but also Bastrop County here. So nearly 75% of the total tax dollars paid by Elgin property owners goes to EISD in Bastrop County, and the city only receives less than a quarter out of every dollar. And as we've talked about before, but I do think it's important for folks to understand, that we're mandated by state law to follow a process for the adoption of the tax rate that based on advertisements and notices we put in, how are compelled to put in the paper, I think in some ways can be confusing. But I think it's important to note with this tax rate this year, for any property owner who has, maintains the same valuation on their property next year as they did this past year, they actually will experience a reduction in their property taxes, in their city portion of the property taxes. That's always, I know, a confusing point for folks, too. They may not see their total tax bill go down, but if they compare what they paid in city taxes last year versus what they pay this year, this coming year, for the same property valuation, their taxes will actually go down by a little over 3%. And this is the notice we provided before that we published in the paper, and that's why I've said it's hard for us sometimes to understand some of the language and that the law compels us to do. But so I'm not surprised that the average taxpayer may get confused by some of this information as well. Sales tax, as we said before, is also a big portion of our budget, yet what consumers pay in town, the city receives for operations, receives just 1% of the 8 and 1/4% that we pay at Walmart and HEB and those stores here in town. So the city's operating on a very lean budget, a very small portion of those tax dollars that come directly to us. But we continue to see good growth in our sales tax. We're also a little confusing in the sense that the state tracks these tax dollars for some reason on calendar year versus every government entity in Texas works on a September to, or an October to September fiscal year. But for the full year's receipts, we're gonna, we've already exceeded the all-time high. But we've made a conservative estimate about next year, and we don't anticipate... The budget is not predicated on continuing that trend, the big growth leap we saw happen this last year. So we think we've taken an appropriately conservative approach to that number as well. This is how the general fund expenditures break out. Again, it should be no surprise that nearly 70% of the budget goes to public safety and public works. Remember, public works now also includes parks maintenance as well and building maintenance. So out of the nine and a half million, you know, almost three quarters of that just goes to those basic services. I'm gonna have Charles speak to just a couple of these slight changes we've made in the budget. This first one is pretty straightforward. If you recall, when we presented the budget, originally, we did not have the EDC's budget completed or included in the budget. So now the board has approved and recommended this budget. So that's one of the numerical changes that occurred in the budget. But I don't know if we have anything real specific to talk about this, Charles, rather than it just is approved by the EDC board, and it'll be in the final document.
Two members of the council were on the EDC board, so if they have any comments they want to make about this budget specifically, you can do that. It's pretty straightforward. It's similar to what it was last year. We just kind of moved over based on what the existing employees they have and their projected salaries. And then basically the expenses that they had for business assistants and so forth are just rolled over from last year. They, their budget's a little over $700,000. They spend, actually, they've been spending about $300,000 to $400,000. So they're building up a little bit of surplus every year.
So we, as you know, we don't take the same approach with EDC's budget as we do the rest of the staff, and pretty much leave it up to the director and the board to work out what they think their budgetary needs are. And so that's what we've done in this case and plugged it into the budget, so.
Yeah, there was one thing that I might mention on the loan payment. That's kind of an estimate yet. We don't have the actual loan. It could be a little bit more than that, but if it is, then we'll just adjust some other things downward. But that was just what I had on a, I think, a five-year loan. It was for the $2,083,000 that the EDC owes the general fund, or the, you know, general fund. So assuming that loan goes through this year, then that loan on the debt service that won $110,000 will be the debt service for this year.
Obviously, the EDC functions as an enterprise fund as well. They're never gonna get it upside down. If the revenue doesn't come in the way we're anticipating, then obviously they'll have to cut back on their expenditures, so. Next item was, again, which is one to make, we're gonna include in the final document. I guess I didn't say that in the beginning. You know, council's been provided the proposed document. It's after the council makes any final changes and does the final adoption, then we'll produce another document that will be the final, the final version of the document. But we just wanted, these are just a couple of changes. We're basically, we've already briefed council on our plans for reclassification and pay plan. So the, this, these slides you see here actually represent pages that'll ultimately end up in the budget document itself. You got anything in particular to add to that, Charles?
No, just that, this will be the first time, I think, that we have a formal approval and adoption of a classification pay plan. What this does, it sets up a structure so that there's some consistency in what titles we have for people and what their pay ranges are and what their pay is, so we can track that on a much better basis than we've been able to do in the past. Before, it was kind of all over the place, and we didn't have really a formal set of job titles, nor specific ranges for the different types of classifications that we have. So this adopted classification pay plan will be what will hire people in at the new rate. It's something that we can check against when increases, for merit increases or whatever increases during the year, are proposed by the various department heads. But it's a lot more formal basis than what we've had in the past, and this is the basis for that.
Okay, and then similarly, these are the numbers that we proposed. These haven't changed. This is the total number of positions that are included in the budget and the six new positions that are included in the budget for next year that we've talked about previously and is in the proposed document. But this, too, is another item that, that these pages will also be in the budget to, again, it's another step to include formal approval of these positions by the council through the budget process.
Yeah, the ones highlighted in yellow are things that have changed from what we originally proposed in the budget. There's things that happened between when we first proposed it and now, where some people have left, and we've had, reclassified their positions. And that's the case of, on the first one, for the accounting manager and assistant finance director. The, on the police department, I misled you in the first one because I had thought, I had forgotten that one of the administrative assistants had been moved to the CID. And so this reflects that change from, instead of having two in public, in the administration, one is in administration, the other one is the CID, and that just simply reflects that one. Go on the next. On the recreation, we, part-time recreation people, we used to have prior to this year, just one class for that, and they were all at 20 hours per week. We decided to put several of them at a point, well, 20 hours a week, and the others at 30 hours a week. The one at 30 hours a week will be eligible for the retirement benefits, the retirement benefits and the health plan. So it's simply to take some of the more high-performing recreation assistants, put them into rec assistant two. They'll be eligible to work more hours, and they'll be eligible for a little greater benefit. And in the utilities, we've upgraded the plant operators to, two of them to chief plant operator in water and in sewer, put them at a higher level. And we, before, we had two and a half operators in water and two and a half operator in sewer. We've taken one of the maintenance, utility maintenance people and put them in to the plant operations for, one for water and one for sewer. So now we have three individuals for in plant operations, water, plant operations, sewer. I know these are little details, but I just want to make sure everybody understands that we did make a few changes from the original budget, and that's what those are.
What's that? Sure, Ken. Sure. Okay. Well, these pages, final pages will be in the final document. We'll send you the presentation, too.
But it's a very nice presentation.
Well, I was gonna say, I can see it really good right here. But it's, the long and short of it is, Charles, that none of this, the net gain is the same. There's only six new positions.
The number of positions is the same. It's just we move people around a little bit, and I just want to reflect that in authorized position, because really, that's what we control off of whenever a vacancy occurs. These are the number of authorized positions that the council is authorized to fill. So we want to make sure that that's documented in a way that we can track it on whenever something does happen with somebody leaving or when we hire somebody new.
Is that...
Okay.
Oh, you're still going?
That's all we had. If anybody, if we want to get into more deeper discussion, I suppose we should do that later in the agenda on that discussion item. But if anybody had clarification about what we said there, we'd
Yeah.
Make those notes before we voted on the budget.
We'll discuss this as a council in the agenda item, correct?
Yes.
So nobody else has second call for public hearing people? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing. Still hear me okay? Susie, thumbs up. You hear me good?
Yes.
We will close the public hearing at 7:21 and reconvene the regular meeting at the same time. Public comment. Does anybody sign up for public comment?
No.
Then moving on to the city manager's report. Item one of the city manager's report review and discussion of the proposed City of Elgin 2021 annual operating budget as presented by the city manager, including but not limited to possible discussion of all departments, operations, functions, personnel, infrastructure, facilities, taxes, and tax rates, and all revenues and expenditures related thereto. Tom?
Mayor, I don't have anything else to present, but obviously I made that, this agenda item broad enough that obviously we can talk about the budget or the tax rate under those ordinances at the same time. This was just intended to make the discussion as wide open as possible since our workshop. Right. Counsel, had any questions or comments?
Does anybody have anything on the budget tonight? Go ahead, Juan.
On page 29, the executive division, it says something about this half-time position was ceded to the EDC as a full-time position. What does that mean?
Well, we, I'll take a shot at it, Charles. We started out the, which page are you on?
29, page 29, executive division.
I think that has to do with the fact that we started out that position as a shared position between the staff and the general fund, and we've since transferred that over to a full-time position that EDC's paying for now.
They're paying for it? That was one of the questions I had. Who was paying for that? And the city marshals, what happened to the city marshal?
Didn't work out, is the short answer. We, the PD has basically taken over those tasks. We, the marshals' structure that we brought to council before, we couldn't find people to fill those positions. And so the PD is performing those functions now.
They're out serving warrants?
Well, not like we thought we could, so.
I thought that the marshal was doing pretty good from what I heard. I don't know, I'd like to see them reinstated or something, because they dedicate all their time to serving those warrants, which are increasing every time I turn around, every month, every four.
We still have that problem of accumulating warrants. So, Charles, do you got anything to add on that?
Yes, I think when it started out, it was working fine. And then we had the chief marshal, we had to let go. And then the guy that was left eventually moved to Houston, or he was from Houston, so he left. And we recruited for, I don't know, for several months, and we couldn't get anybody because it's a part-time position that still requires certification, and we just couldn't get anybody to fill those positions, so.
So those were part-time positions?
They're part-time.
That was about what we had the funding for, right? Because you have to have two positions to serve those warrants, right? Is that what I understand is?
Well, that's, yeah. Because of some of the problems that they had in some other cities, that we would like to have two people. And what we were doing was using one of the police officers to go when the warrants were served. And then because we didn't have enough people, that kind of got to a point where we couldn't keep the guy active all the time. So, and eventually, he got a job in Houston as a police officer. So we didn't have anybody. And we've been trying to recruit for at least six to eight months, and we couldn't get any applicants at all for that position.
Can you tell us why the other officer was let go?
We can. It, well, it's been a while. Number one, I think he resigned, didn't he?
Yeah, he did resign.
Yeah, we didn't let him go.
But he was, there was a problem with them using the vehicle, I think, for an unauthorized.
I'd just say this, the bottom line is, we owe the council a report on this, and we're remiss in not having done this before. So I'd rather you just let us step back and get our thoughts organized and come back on that.
Okay.
That's okay. I'll have the chief here to speak to that.
The lieutenant and assistant chief positions at the PD, they were combined? And so we have two commanders now?
We had, we reclassified the assistant chief to commander, and we had a lieutenant that we reclassified to commander. So now we got two.
Two commanders.
Yeah, the same number of positions, just different classifications.
So essentially, we got rid of a lieutenant position, got rid of a police, assistant chief position, and made two commanders. They were basically splitting the duties anyway, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then back to the marshals. That's a program that we could get back. We could address another budget if more funds were available to maybe increase pay. Or do we restructure to where PD's gonna pick that back up again?
Yeah, the, what the intent was to have the corporal that's in the detective unit, who had originally been in the administration doing a part-time job, we made him full-time, and he was going to be doing, serving the warrants. But that's, that's how that program was gonna continue.
I kind of think you've got to have full-time people doing that, because I've seen it at the Austin Police Department, everywhere else, where if you have a choice of serving warrants and doing another job, you're gonna do the other job.
That's right.
I mean, so, you know, I know that municipal court was paying their salaries, I guess, or maybe the returns on the warrants and stuff was paying their salary. And they were supposed to be, like, paying for itself.
Yeah, it was supposed to be, but it wasn't when we got down to just one.
Didn't, didn't, from what I remember, the report on it was, they did real good that first period they served all those warrants, kind of got caught up to the hard ones to clear, and then it stopped cash flow.
They got the low-hanging fruit, which is that, you know, what you expect to do.
Right.
So you're a lot more successful at the beginning than when you start getting into the more difficult ones.
I was worried about that.
And mostly, if you can do the local ones, you can collect those fairly easily. But the ones that are out of town, those are the ones that make it difficult for them guys to track down if they're not gonna go to those cities and serve those warrants there.
Okay.
That's all I have for now.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor, I had a question.
Spiga.
Thomas, is the time to ask about certain items, I guess, in the budget?
Sure.
Well, that's what Tom said. So we talked a little bit about last week briefly about the line item for street improvement, that it's showing 15K for this time around. What are we gonna do with 15K? And maybe talk a little bit about the long-term plan?
Just for veils, can you tell, you got that open? What page is that? Oh, I thought you had it right there. If you look up in the... If you look up in the, the other section above that, the 15K is just for the crack and seal part of that work, and then under, here it is, under street maintenance supplies, there's 149,000 under supplies and materials above that.
So, page 58?
Page 58, I'm sorry, okay.
What was, what was your question, Miss Vega, sorry?
Question is, is that the 15K that was the line item for that particular item, street, the crack, was it the crack seal program?
Yes.
So that is the item that I'm talking about specifically? How are we choosing, I guess, what to crack seal? Is that the way to say that for next year?
Yeah.
And then, Tom, you're saying that, which is the other line item?
Above that, under supplies and materials, where it says street maintenance supplies, it says there's 149,000 in for next year's budget. The crack seal program is just the, you know, where we go around and...
The ugly black stuff?
Yeah, they seal the cracks, and it looks ugly, but it's really effective in prolonging the life of the pavement. So that 15,000 is exclusively for that part.
Yeah.
Now, the street maintenance supplies, 149,000, that's where we both buy regular maintenance supplies out of that, but we also use that money to chip seal other streets. And if you remember, we, we had this deal with the county where they gave us that piece of equipment recently, we're going to use that. So we're, we're hopeful that 149,000 will go a long ways to crack seal a number of streets, but, but, but what exactly those streets are and where they're located are to be determined, I guess I could say.
Okay, so that's still to be determined.
So we can, I think, as you and I talked about, I think we, I think in the past, that part of this problem, as you and I talked about, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we had some budget problems where we had to eliminate all, all of that work from the budget, and we're just now getting back to where we're able to devote some money to that. And I think before, the council used to see a list of streets that we're going to do, right? And the council would kind of approve that, so our plan would be to circle back that same way this year, once we, once we get that together.
Are you open to some suggestions?
Yeah, that's part of that whole process. We will, we'll, now, I will say this, part of the struggle we have with this, that, that's not, obviously, we need to take a much more comprehensive approach to that, and that's part of the reorganization of the staff that we made in the last year, and, and one of the tasks that, that public works is, is set upon now is that we have a much more comprehensive approach to analyzing pavement conditions, tracking that, having a multi-year plan for when, when certain streets are being paved, but then, once we get that structure in place, it'll tell us each year from an engineering standpoint, so to speak, what, or a time, time structure, when certain streets are ready to be repaved. Still, at that point, we'll come up with the list of streets we're going to do, and we'll have council authorize that. Now, once you have that in place, every year, the street could be...
It might be on the list for this year, but...
So they're on, yeah, two years ahead, but they need to be addressed now. So, yeah, the council, at the end of the day, how we spend that money, we're certainly, we'll let council help us decide which ones we should be focused on.
With that machine and that budget, you can get a pretty good chunk of crack sealing done, right?
Well, the chip seal, yes.
Or crack seal.
Well, the cracks, the crack seal, yes, we can do a lot for 15,000.
Yeah, because we, we, I don't, before, I fought pretty hard to get that put on there about six or seven years ago, and the, it was 25,000 then, and when it came off, I, I, we actually did get some crack sealing done that year out of the maintenance, regular maintenance budget, but we never exceeded 25 grand. That's probably why it's at 15 now. So that's just my, my horse sense, memory, I guess. But, but yeah, so I, I think that it's been pretty, pretty progressive. Of course, Texas is a crack seal state, a lot of heat and swelling and rains when it feels like it, so, yeah. It, it was really, we got that, that piece of equipment is now ours after, do we ever get that deal done?
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we announced that a little while, a couple of meetings ago, so that's really nice. The maintenance and all that, however, is probably your most expensive part on that machine, but, anyway, yeah, that's good questions.
Yeah, no, I'm good, thank you, thank you, Tom.
Anybody else, questions on the budget? Okay, Juan?
Part of the reclassification that we did on pay was to, to eliminate those car allowances, but to avoid the employees taking a hit on it financially. We've, in about all those cases, incorporated those into their pay. Is the city manager the only one left that gets a car allowance? Yeah, okay.
That's just because we got to do it, right?
Now, we had, we had 10 different people that used to get them, but, but that, that was, I think everybody knew that was a way to, to frankly, just give those employees more compensation and, and not really, and so, from their standpoint, as long as we roll that into their pay, they, we can change that policy and it won't, yeah, literally affect it, but that's what we're doing this year with the comp plan.
They weren't all...
No. They didn't negotiate. I did, I guess.
Did that, that made, was that, was that, I guess there was some backend helping, that, some backend help on that, right? Whenever y'all made that decision, like it made, made the, made something simplify, simpler, or did we just do that to try to get their salaries up?
Well, in the past, I, I think it was done to get salaries up, but for us, it's, it's, well, like I said, we had 10 dozen people getting car allowances and...
Oh, so nothing's changed?
No, again...
Oh, okay, okay. I thought, okay, well, I know how it used to work.
We had employees getting car allowances, frankly, just not justified to provide those, but at the same time, it doesn't mean, just like you said, it was, it was to help bolster their pay. Part of the concept of this comp plan is now we're moving them up to where they should be getting, what they should be getting paid, and so we're eliminating the car allowance, but I guess what I want to make sure you understand, anybody that got one before, they're not taking a hit financially, they're still at or above where they were getting paid. We're just, it's almost the same thing, we just kind of reclassify it, so... That answer your question?
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else, questions? Okay. General activity?
Nothing really to report, other than I would say, if anybody, Friday this week is, is the other kind of reassessment, I guess I'd say, deadline on our, on our COVID management plan. I don't know that we'll be making any changes, but, but always open and welcome any kind of input council might have about that, if, either tonight or later, about, you know, when we need to, if we need to work harder to open up things more or not. Like I said, at this point, we have a department head meeting tomorrow, we'll talk more about it then. I don't really anticipate much changes, but, but this is a thing we're trying to learn and decide together, so there's no magic behind that, so if anybody had any thoughts about that, I'd sure, I'd welcome any suggestions they may have. But, but you can send, email those to me, we can talk about it later, we don't really have to talk about that tonight unless somebody wanted to. But other than that, I don't have anything else.
Susie, are you good? Not to put you on the spot, you're just the only one virtual, so. All right, well, then, we'll move on to new business. Item number one, under new business, an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for the City of Elgin, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, in accordance with the local government code of the State of Texas and the ordinances, ordinances and rules of the City of Elgin, Texas, appropriating the various amounts thereof and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date. Tom?
I don't really have it.
Anything more?
I have anything to add, Mayor? I guess I would just say, for the good of the order, that the budget is on our website, available for anybody that would like to review it, and of course, we welcome any questions or input from the public on the budget, if they have any.
And, and this is what I had the motion for, right? This item?
That's for the tax rate.
No, we're doing budgets, okay?
The tax rate next, just budget, budget, a normal motion will work for the budget.
Okay. Anybody got any questions for adoption? I'll entertain an ordinance to prove, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as presented, approving and adopting the budget for fiscal year 20 through 21.
So moved.
Motion by Brazier?
Second.
Second by Pinson. Any other questions? We'll call for votes, Sue.
Your yes?
Cannon, yes.
Montales, yes.
Vega, yes.
Ariana, yes.
Jones, yes.
Pinson, yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Another budget in the books. Item number two, an ordinance levying an ad valorem taxes for maintenance and operation of the municipal government of the City of Elgin, Texas for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year, and providing for the interest and sinking fund for the 2020 tax year, and providing for an effective date. Tom, anything further?
I don't think, ma'am.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a very legal and proper motion. Does anybody have any questions before we get started? May? No? We good on tax rate? All right. I will entertain a motion that the City of Elgin property tax rate be increased by the adoption of ta, of a tax rate of .635663 with a hundred, per hundred dollar valuation, which is effectively a 2.26% increase in the tax rate. I suppose I got to stop there. Got a lot more I'd like to add to that, but...
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilmember Pinson. Second by Councilmember Vega. I don't want to ask for comments, because then, then I'll open myself up for that. Anybody got any questions before we call a vote? All right, then I'll entertain a vote, our call for vote. Councilmember Pinson?
Pinson, yes.
Cannon, yes?
Vega, yes.
Ariana, yes.
Jones, yes.
That passes unanimously. Thank you, council. So you know, the tax rate stays the same, or it gets lower, it's just the tax limit is different. Thank you, legislature. Moving on, does anybody have any announcements? Before we go into, we are going to have an executive session item tonight, I'll announce that when we get into it. Does anybody have any announcement, staff? Can you make one up before I, while I access an email, somebody? This is what it's like if you meet every week, nobody has anything to say.
It's going to rain tomorrow.
Is it?
It's supposed to. Cool the lights.
Okay. All right. Then I will convene the regular, recess the regular meeting again at 7:43, and we will convene, adjourn, adjourn into executive session pursuant to section 551.04, personnel matters to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reset, reassignment duties, disciplines, or dismissal of a public officer employee. Any, any questions before we enter an exec? Yes.
Like, we don't anticipate any action, right? So we'll be...
Looks that way, right.
Well, I mean, we'll be ending the broadcast, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we'll be ending the broadcast, that's right. Thank you for tuning in. We will enter into executive session in five minutes, recess at 7:44.